Good evening and welcome to the Pittsburgh Board of Education meeting. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started this evening, I would like to say that we're pleased to say that the Board of Education is beginning the process of transitioning back to in-person board meetings. Board members, central office team members, presenters, and public comment will all be in person. That said, we'll be following the New York State Department of Health guidance by adhering to the required social distancing and masking for all who attend our meetings. In addition, we'll be continuing our live stream broadcast for those residents who wish to view the board meeting real time. So, welcome, everybody. So, may I start with the approval of the agenda, please? Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Ted. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We are pleased to welcome our Mendon High School Principal Melissa Julian this evening, and our Vice Principals as well. Welcome, and thank you so much for our tour this week. We appreciate spending the time with you and seeing all of what has been transpiring in Mendon High School this year. So, welcome.
Thank you for joining us. It's rare to have guests these days, so we appreciate all of you coming to visit us. So, thank you. On behalf of Mendon High School, I get to present tonight, so I appreciate you taking the time to listen a little bit about how Mendon has changed this year amongst the pandemic and other things. So first, we'd like to celebrate a little bit. We were one of nine high schools in New York State that was recognized as a national blue-ribbon school this year. (applause) Thank you. And this was an interesting process, as last year, early October, we were asked by New York State if we'd be interested in applying. So, we did just that, and it didn't end until well into April. So, trying to put together a 42-page application process from your couch is a different process than if we had done it through our instructional leadership team. We still used all of the players, and I'd like to give a special shout-out to Special Education, who helped us, to the data team, who helped provide additional information, and then to all of the department leaders, who helped put it all together. And then Julie Barker actually read it for us for professional development and that sort of thing. One of the things that I think highlighted our application that made us rise to the top was just our collaborative nature in Pittsburgh, and the fact that our families are huge contributors to our school, and that helped us rise above the others. So, we were recognized as a high-achieving school. We will be recognized hopefully again in five more years, but it's an interesting process. And so, we thank you for all of your support going through that. At Mendon, our areas of focus have remained the same this year regardless of the pandemic, and they are around three things: the health and safety of our students and staff, both physically and emotionally; our instructional practices and continuing to provide the best instructional opportunities for students as possible; and then to continue working on our social-emotional supports that we offer our students. This year, once we received guidance around reopening schools, we basically had to start from zero. So, we took the skeleton of the schedule we had from last spring, and we made several weeks' worth of adjustments. Kelly and Laura, Eric Damaro sat in a room for five straight days and basically took the schedule and split it in half to make sure that our cohorts were evenly split, but then to make sure that our students had physical distance in six feet. So, what you can see is, in some of our spaces, we left all of the chairs in there, but cut the room in half by people. And so, some of our teachers traveled to seven, eight, nine different rooms throughout the day in order to facilitate, to make sure that the rooms meet what we needed them to meet. Some of our classes had 29 students in them, such as our English nine honors, and the cohort, while we tried to evenly balance, some days it was 19 and 10. So, that 19 would end up in the large group space, as you can see. We also rearranged our gym and made it a study hall space, but also our cafeteria, cafeteria too, if you will. The kids love it.[280.33][280.33](laughter) And they'll tell you. So, we had to make some adjustments. We looked at furniture. There were days that Kelly, Laura, and I were pulling furniture around. There were days that the custodians would pick something up, move it. We'd say, "Put it back." They would put it back. So, they've been unbelievable, too. So, thank you to Jeff Beardsley's team as well. In addition, we looked at our auditorium space. Our auditorium space during the 5, 6, 7, which are our lunch periods, acts as not only a study hall space, but also our music space. Our band and orchestra, our band and chorus use the stage with the curtain closed, and so our students in study hall are getting music at the same time because our large spaces are full. We were creative with our outdoor space, and teachers were able to utilize that as well. As you can see, Bethany Patterson is teaching a government class, AP Gov, class outside. And through the use of technology, we've been able to do some interesting things with teams that allow them to go outside and make use of the technology in different ways. In order for kids to feel safe, we designated certain areas of the hallway, and we had our stairs going up and down, but only one way at a time. And then, we finally had to make more isolation spaces for our nurses' office, so we ended up moving five different offices to accommodate that. So, our attendance clerk moved, our faculty secretary moved, and the domino effect of all of that. So, we had different spaces for people. Everybody at Mendon has been amazing, and when we came down to it, we said, "We just need your space for a year," and they were phenomenal. Our instructional practices have been really tried around what do the students need. And so, our instructional support teams have met weekly, as they have in the past. And at first, it was socially distanced and sometimes via Zoom, but as we've come back, they've been meeting more in person. And they've identified probably about 100 students across the building who needs additional support. And through their work, we've been able to put kids into a structured study hall as needed for students with any incompletes or missing assignments, and that's built right into the day opposite their phys ed generally. We've been able to mid-year provide an after-school support for students who are remote, or students who also have incompletes to come in, and our instructional support team recommends those students to come in to person and work with para-professionals, typically around executive functioning things, such as how do you organize your materials? What assignments do you tackle first? What does that look like for you? Do you have a space to work from beside your bed? And they've been able to provide for them that quiet and space. Just having someone else there sometimes really does help. Wednesday afternoon support has been a huge bonus for us. Through the Transportation Department, we've been able to pick kids up on the Wednesday when they finish their classes, and they're able to come into the building for almost two hours and receive that support as well from some of our para-support. And then, our 504 tutor has been working leaps and bounds trying to get kids both in person and via Zoom on the days they're there. Again, a lot of what we're finding the kids need this year is just some of that executive functioning piece. I will say that most of our students have really overcome the hybrid model and are in a groove at this point, and feel as though they've adapted quite well, and learned skills that we just cannot normally teach, such as the time-management piece. I've had seniors say to me that they go to work in the morning because it's easy just to scan the things and from the cart, but then when they come home at 1, 2, 7, 8, that's when they do their work. And as we notice in a regular school year, that's when they do their work. Teams has been really great at able, we are able to attest when kids are doing their assignments and turning them in. And for teens, it's that late-time hour. So, that's what we've been finding. So, as the year has unfolded, we've been able to add more and more supports for our students, and we continue to do that through the use of technology, but also bringing students back in full-time as needed. So, some of the things that have resulted from our best practices with our teachers come right from our collaborative team time on Wednesday afternoons. Our teachers have done some really great things to try to be hands-on with the students as much as possible. For example, our art teachers created mini-kits that every student walked into the room had a mini-kit, so they would have all their own supplies. So, they didn't feel nervous about touching or sharing materials at the beginning of the year. They did that not only for the students in person, but also all of our remote students received one of these packages. So, before they even started the year, they had their full-year art kit for studio art. In addition, a lot of our teachers are doing more with formative assessments than ever before. So, rather than the 40-minute straight test, they've been trying to do dipsticks along the way. So, our students are getting mini-quizzes, using cahoots or quizies as they come in. So, it's more of a competitive competition-type game than it is just a quick, straight quiz. We've also been doing more with Grade Cam than ever before because the data that it provides the teachers is immediate feedback as to how the students are doing. So, sometimes that's a ticket in, sometimes it's a ticket out. But our teachers are then able to meet with their teams on Wednesday and talk about what are the big pieces that we need to refine and go through again. And, as we all know, Teams is now here to stay. I think our teachers have really adjusted well to the technology in ways that we didn't anticipate, and the fact that they're able to create materials together and share them through Teams has really been a secret blessing to all of this work. So, we're excited to see where that goes, and we can't wait to see what they do next. At Mendon, we continue to pride ourselves on our social-emotional connections with students. Our SEL committee continues to meet this year, and we've really used that nine-minute homeroom that we had at the beginning of the day with all of our students to do some of our SEL work. For example, in November, we did gratitude journals. Every student got, received a gratitude journal, and they journaled. We did one minute of journaling around mindfulness and the powers behind mindfulness every day that they were with us. At the end of that, you'll see the leaves in the middle. Every student was asked to take one thing out of their journal and put it on a leaf. Each student in the school did a leaf, and they were hung throughout the building. So, then, kids could see how they were connected, what ways were they tied together. And so, that was one of the examples. The board on the left was done by our 12-131 classroom, and they asked each student to write something about kindness, or a message that they wanted other students to receive. And then, they highlighted the fact that in winter, one kind word can warm the winter day. And so, they really, they did the video announcements for it. They went out of their way and cut the snowmen. They made sure the students all had them, and then they hung them throughout the building so students could see them. They're now working on a new board for us around the idea of spring and blossoming and starting afresh. So, we're excited to see that one. Our wellness challenge was every day for three months, we had students do something mentally stimulating, but also physically stimulating. So, it was as simple as do 20 minutes of physical activity, and we challenged everyone in the school to participate: staff, students, everyone. And then, finally, our silver lining reflection this year. What we're looking to do is, at the end of the year, starting now, each student and staff member will find one thing from the pandemic that they took away as a positive. And so, those will be throughout the school, so students can take those and remember them, and then see all the connections again between each other. And then, finally, the last thing we've done, which has been really overwhelmingly powerful, is trivia. A trivia competition between the different homerooms, and they really get into it. And some of the trivia is really fun and interesting, but they really get into it. So, if you're ever there on a Monday or Tuesday, please participate. It's a lot of fun. Any questions for us at Mendon?
Anyone at the table have a question? Comment? Looks like Pete does.
Curious. You mentioned instructional practices and that Teams is here to stay, but what are some of the instructional practices that you've employed through the pandemic that will also likely stay?
So, we've seen some teachers using video in interesting ways to connect with students where they've been recording themselves, which we'll probably still keep, because now that the videos have been created, they have those to pull from. Which, nice about the videos is the students can pause them, stop them, start them again. We've seen more and more teachers using that technology where it was overwhelming for them before. In addition, what we're finding is our collaborative teams from the adults are also using Teams to connect with one another. So, in addition to having those meetings on Wednesdays, they're sharing all sorts of materials through their chemistry team or through the biology team that we have yet to see up until this point. So, even from the adult standpoint of, "Hey, I was working on this lab on Thursday night. I thought you should all have it." They take it, and then they just push it to their kids. So, for the ease of even those small things, rather than, "Hey, I worked on this lab. Great, thanks," and set it down, they've just been sharing materials. And from an adult perspective, that's changed the way that our adults interact. So, I hope that helps.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment, Amy. I really need to thank Melissa and the Assistant Principals, Laura and Kelly, for so much this year. It's, from an outsider, it's hard to tell what's happening inside a school. It seems that with half the kids, you have half the job, and it's double the fun, and we know that's certainly not the case. So, even as we approach the spring, I would, I have to share with the board and the audience that the amount of requests that are put on you, and many of them from me, that make things very complicated. But you are always all so open to doing your best because they're all best for kids. So, spring is difficult in a typical season, a typical normal year, but now we're working on plans for prom for our students and all the guidance that comes with that, which is significant. So, we're talking about tents and permits and protocols and DJs and dance floors and food and working with parents and much more, coordinating, I should say, with parents to assist with it. We're working on revamping graduation, and all that entails for all of you. The senior parade means that you're getting students' pictures, and you're bringing them to our Director of Communications and making sure that the names are right and that the picture is right, and the logistics of that event. And looking at things like our senior awards, to bring them in person and all that entails. And on top of all of this, thinking about all that you do weekly with our counselors and other staff with getting students' names on paper who are struggling emotionally or academically, individually, reaching out to those families, at times making house visits, following up with attendance issues, to make sure to the best of your ability that students aren't falling through the cracks in any way, shape, or form. It's hard to see from the outside the love that happens at Mendon High School and the amount of work that you all do. And while I appreciate your presentation very much, it doesn't do diligence specific to all that you're really doing at your school. So, hats off to the three of you and to all of your staff for making the most of a once-in-a-lifetime crisis.
Well, thank you, Mike. Because of your leadership, we are able to do what we do, right?
Thank you.
So, it goes both ways. So, we appreciate you and the board and everybody's support with that. We wouldn't be here without the kids, and that's why we're all here, I think, every day. So, we just are grateful that we can give these opportunities to our kids. So, we'll work hard for them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1045.83][1045.83](applause) Okay, moving on to the 2021-2022 Proposed Budget Presentation and Adoption.
So, I'm going to have to apologize in advance. My glasses are at home.[1074.33][1074.33](laughter) So, I'm going to do my very best, I promise, to get us through this. Welcome to tonight's Proposed Budget Adoption. Thank you for all of your questions and attentiveness throughout our workshops to date. Just to review the agenda for this evening, specifically, we're here to define the purpose and legal requirements of the Superintendent and the Board of Education, to review the district budget guidelines, the recent New York State enacted budget impacts, review my proposed 2021-22 budget, following the programs and service format, addressing highlights and unique nuances, reviewing summary of revenue sources to support the Superintendent's spending plan, introduce four propositions, which is very unique for us. So, you are going to hear Darren share this. All four propositions are specific to the use of reserves, each in one way, shape, or form, and each of the propositions have zero tax or debt impact for the community. And then, we will conclude with any questions or comments. So, tonight's specific tasks are to present the Superintendent's Proposed 21-22 Spending Plan to the Board of Ed, present the expected funding sources for the proposed budget, and review four propositions to be presented to the voters regarding the use of reserve funds for specific legal purposes. Tonight's primary legal purpose has not changed from years in the past. Also, to present the Superintendent's Recommended 21-22 Proposed Budget for the Board of Education to consider adopting as their own budget to be presented to the voters. And for the community's sake, just an understanding of what this means, up until this point, I have been working with stakeholders, especially our district planning team, to create a budget. We've shared the budget with you through multiple workshops. Tonight, we're going to propose the final budget, and if adoption is granted, then technically, the budget goes from the Superintendent's Development to becoming the Board of Education's budget. There will be official action required this evening. So, in the budget development process, we meet the usual legal requirements while addressing the current health, education, and financial environment as well. The proposed budget is predicated on the reinstatement of full-time in-person programs. So, I want to restate that again. As we build this budget next year, for next year, we do not see a way where we would not be in school full-time in-person. And the budget that's presented to you largely has that assumption built in. Also, learning the intricacies of understanding and implementing unprecedented and complex New York State and federal budgets, which we'll talk about shortly, and their numerous impacts. And then, lastly, sustainability, taking care of today's urgent priorities without creating a crisis tomorrow. Every year, as we build a budget, we're not trying to solve a problem for next year, but we're trying to have the foresight around the ideas of sustainability moving into the future. And again, we're going to make that correlation between that concept and the federal funds as well. As we take a step back, just to remind the community as well as the Board of Education, our stakeholder group within our district planning team spent a lot of time creating our budget guidelines this year, which are the, serve as the true north for what we feel a budget must prioritize as we develop through the process. We have students of all shapes, walks of life, different family backgrounds, different everything that come into our public schools. And our job is to make sure that every single one of our students feel included, that they feel valued, that they feel engaged, that they feel that they can be themselves, that they don't have to check their culture or background at the door. And so, we listed as our first priority within this budget that it's important that we have equity and inclusion for all of our students. Life is hard. We have an opportunity to make life easier for students. We have life, we have an opportunity and an obligation to make life easier for children in our district by making our environment open and welcoming to all. So, that's our very first priority. And you can see, as we go down the list, in order to make that happen, we also need to consider social, emotional, and mental health supports. We also need to keep students safe physically in our buildings. So, as we build the budget, these are the things, when we talk about a student-based budget, that are critical for us to have built within. Knowing that we're coming off a year of, boy, you name the descriptor, we're coming off a really tough year and a half, and we need to be prepared for the unknown, some known and some unknown, of what students are going to come back to us with as we enter full-time next year. And so, that means learning gaps, how and to what extent those learning gaps are going to be. Our assumption is they're probably going to be larger at the secondary level versus the elementary level, given that we were in five days a week at the elementary level. We also have seen the value of technology, and so increasing our technological support is going to be critical. We have loaned out over 1,000 pieces of hardware to students, and the wear and tear, along with the cycle, has caused the need for us to continue to build our fleet as we move more closer to a one-to-one type of scenario with our students and technology. High-quality professional learning is always significant. I think in any organization, when a company and those within the company truly understand mission, vision, values, best practices, schools are no different. If we want to remain one of the best school districts in the country, we need to make sure that we are staying ahead of the game as it relates to the most critical areas in professional development, such as equity and inclusion for all, how to provide cutting-edge, leading-type-of-tiered interventions for students on all ends. So, we have gifted learners, for example, that didn't necessarily get what they would in person. And so, they may not have been as challenged as they could have been. And on another end, we have students that really struggled academically, and they're going to need supports. And so, all of us need to come together and understand what that means to provide personalized instruction, to meet students where they're at, and help all students grow. Along those lines, specific to our student-based budget, as well as the concept of social-emotional learning, what are the best ways to create a classroom environment, a hallway environment, a building environment where social-emotional learning is prevalent and is expected, and it happens all the time. In other areas, I look at, as we built these budget guidelines, we also talked about the reality of bringing students back in and what that entails from a safety perspective. We haven't had to necessarily talk about a physical safety plan perspective, but we're planning back to where we were pre-pandemic and thinking about our processes, our drills, some of the cutting-edge technology we had in place just about to kick off prior to the pandemic. And then, bringing back that concept of professional learning communities, and we heard Melissa share a little bit about that at Mendon High School tonight, the power of educators coming together to discuss their craft and best practices and sharing that, so that regardless of the teacher that you have, your child is in front of a teacher, an educator, that's able to provide the highest quality of instruction possible. Continuing with our budget guidelines, we also know that we have to balance the investment in education with sensitivity to limited community resources. The first thing that we shared is that we are not going to exceed the tax cap. So, tonight, what you're going to hear is that our tax cap is actually under 2% by formula, and so, we are going to stay within that tax cap. We are also opening schools fully without temporary learning models. And I'm not sure if there's going to be exceptions for a small portion of remote learning. That's to be seen. But the vast, vast, vast majority of our students are being planned for, by us, to come in full-time, five days a week, as it was pre-pandemic. And certainly balancing community expectations for services and programs with being cognizant of property, values, income levels. You'll see a budget tonight with a tax cap that is 1.9. You're going to see a budget that is just over 2.5% increase from year to year. And I think what you'll see within our community is that our cap is on the low end, and our budget-to-budget increase is certainly at the low-middle end. So, as we take a step back and look at where we fall, I think that it's a budget that everyone should be proud of. We also understand that we need to maintain fiscal stability now and into the future through sustainable reserve accounts. Last year, at the end of the year, we were able to take fund balance and put those monies into reserve accounts that will absolutely set us in a real positive direction moving forward. So, even going back to the propositions, as I think about one of them in particular, which is a capital project that would cost $0 to the taxpayers, that's because we were able to take some of the fund balance from the end of the year, last year's savings, and responsibly put it in that account, because we know we're going to have to change our roofs. We know we're going to have to make improvements for our physical plant, especially given that we have so many buildings and square footage. We've also spent a lot of time this year, as we have consistently, with advocacy with legislators relative to appropriate levels of funding. legislators relative to appropriate levels of funding, which we're actually going to talk about in a second. So if I could, before I turn this over to our Assistant Superintendent, I want to thank Darren, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Leanne, who is our Director of Finance, for putting together not only this year's budget, but budgeting every year for the sake of sustainability and being very forward-thinking. So before I turn it over to Darren, I'm going to just give you a couple of highlights and clarification. So this year, a handful, and I don't want to give the specific number, but I believe it's less than 10, districts across New York State were considered below being funded at the 60% level. So for decades, I'm sorry, not decades, for the last 10 years, we have started the budget process, sharing with the community how we are not being funded in an appropriate rate through the state, specific to aid. We've gone to Albany, we've advocated every single year, our board has been a huge part of that, our parents and our staff have all done different types of advocacy to say, "Look at us, we are one of the lowest-funded schools in the state." This year, for the first time in a really long time, the state looked at us. And they looked at us with a handful of others across the state, and they determined a minimum threshold. And they said this year, all schools at minimum have to be funded at 60% level. So to clarify that, just for a second, when you read in the newspaper that New York State schools are fully funded, that's definitely not the case. You really have to read into this and do your research. So for us, prior to this year, I believe we're at 54% funded. So we have an increase this year in our state aid, which is fantastic, especially when you think about where we were in January as we started this process, we were talking about 20% cuts in state aid. The state has come in and said that schools that are below 60%, we're going to bring you to 60%. And then you have a commitment from us to keep getting you closer to 100%. Now, that's a commitment, it's not money in our hands. But to be fair, that's a wonderful thing, it's actually a beautiful thing. So for us this year, we received 60%, we're being 60% funded. Now, a lot of people would say, "Boy, that's horrible." We're saying this is great for us this year, because we're not used to getting more state aid. So that 50, that extra 6% has led to about a $2 million increase in our budget, in aid. Now, the beauty with that is that, as we met with you last time, we had planned on taking an additional $2 million out of reserves to stay within the tax cap for this year. This additional funds from the state allows us not to have to dip into our reserve, which allows us to be more thoughtful about emergencies when we need to tap into that reserve or for different initiatives to tap into the reserve. The second thing that is really confusing when you read the paper or the news, is you see a windfall of money that's coming to the schools through federal funding. And to be quite honest, it is a lot of money. But the money from the federal funding is 100% separate from our budget adoption tonight. It's separate from the budget, it has a separate process to apply for, it's actually treated like grants. So when you hear of the 6.5-ish million dollars that Pittsburgh has pledged to get from federal funds, it's separate from this evening. But it's exciting, because if it does come there fruition, then we all get to put our heads together and look at, over the course of the next three years, how do we spend that money in a way that's not going to cause us concern for the future? So in other words, how do we look at this money as a stopgap from transitioning from COVID to post-COVID world? So again, when you hear about that windfall, it has to stay away from this budget process. We can't use the federal funds to decrease the levy, to decrease taxes, we can't do that, it's totally separate from there. So I just want to pause for a second and see if the board has any questions before I turn over to Darren, just around that comment of keeping the federal funds separate from the state funds.
So Mike, can you just briefly describe the timeline and the process for the federal funds?
It's evolving.
Right.
So what we've been shared with so far is that there will be concrete guidance in a couple of weeks. One of the things that we do believe to be true is that within the federal constraints is that there are specific areas that we need to target our funds towards. So it could be evidence-based learning gaps and how we're going to bring students back on scale for where they could have been pre-COVID. Some of it deals with marginalized groups, some of it's low socioeconomic students, and then there's also broad areas that are involved in the description. I think the problem right now is that the federal, the federal language doesn't necessarily agree with New York State's concept, no surprise. And so, we're waiting for continued guidance. But I think that the real good news is that it's basically putting together a three-year plan to spend 6-point-something million dollars around students and learning. And my hope is that there's a broader interpretation of what that student recovery and learning can look like. And it's something that I'm actually, at our board retreat tomorrow night, will be working the board through to look at some of the opportunities you feel would be important that our students aren't able to have right now with the ability of being able to fund something different in the very near future.
Mike, just to reaffirm and make sure I heard you correctly, but there's specific language and regulation on the federal dollars that makes it impossible for us to in any way reduce the tax levy and reduce the burden on our taxpayers on a dollar-for-dollar basis?
Hundred percent. So specifically, even as we received our funding, the federal funds are on a totally separate level than our state funds. So we have to treat federal funds over here separate from tonight. And the only reason I'm bringing it up tonight is because I think that there's a lot of confusion as we read different articles that are out there about schools getting a windfall in aid. And it's not wrong, that is kind of a windfall, but that's federal, which is different from tonight's budget presentation.
Mike, what role does the state play in managing the federal funds, any?
So that's to be determined right now, it's a really good question. The state has their wishes, the federal government has their disposition, and we're awaiting where that's going to lie and who ultimately is going to be approving the grants, the federal grants, if you will.
So you said it was for learning gaps, does it only, is it primarily, or can it be social-emotional issues, is it just for students particularly?
So today, we spent about an hour this morning, Darren walked us through all the different parameters and where there's conflict between the federal and the state. My sense is where we'll land is we'll have some discrepancy where we're able to use it for SEL, mental health, AIS, RTI. A lot of it is supposed to be used for summer, extending school year programs, extended school day programs, and then all of the other stuff. So we have, just like the guidance that's been coming out all the time, guidance comes out, and then we wait for a while for clarification of the guidance. This is a little bit more complex because it's federal guidance. It came out with New York State guidance that has, and they're not meshing right now. So we have a little bit more to flesh out with that. But it's good news. So the budget, I feel, is really good news. Our kids are coming back next year, we're able to provide the same level of program and more for them for next year, and our tax cap is under 2%. And I think that we are poised to bring back our students to a very robust and high breadth and depth of programming. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren to continue. Thank you, Darren.
Good evening. Normally, we delve right straight into the appropriation side of the budget, but since state aid and the enacted state budget has been getting so much attention recently, we thought we would hit that first. And back in February, when we were together for the work session number one, is when we looked at the governor's proposal, and I thought maybe we'd look at a little contrast as far as what actually happened. But the high points from that point was the governor was expecting $6 billion from the federal government, and that was predicated, or that was the basis of the state aid runs that we received. However, he was hopeful to get $15 billion, and that's what he was pushing to get. Foundation aid formula was frozen again for the 11th year in a row, no increase. So a district like us that has very small, if any, enrollment decrease compared to some other districts around us that have substantial decrease, the foundation aid per pupil, for them was actually going up, where for us, it was staying the same. The governor recommended services aid, which was the 13 various forms of formula aid or expense-driven aids to be combined into one, and then he wanted to reduce them by a factor. The real creative part was treating the STAR, this school tax assessment relief, to the voters, treating that as a state aid, and then below the line, reducing our state aid by a similar amount to what that STAR amount was. That's the first time that that's ever been happened, ever happened. So we were preparing for a couple of different scenarios, and what you saw is we had anywhere from a $300,000 decrease in total state aid, up to, or I'm sorry, $300,000 increase, up to a $4.6 million decrease in state aid if the stimulus money did not materialize. So let's fast forward to today, what actually happened. The governor got close to what he wanted, $12.6 billion in federal money. However, there's a lot of caveats and strings attached to that, so they couldn't actually do everything with it they wanted to. They couldn't, they couldn't pull money out of the state aid formula and just plug this in in its place like they did last year with the CARES money. Foundation aid, as Mike said, was three different areas that you could fall into. We fell into the bucket of being under the 60%. So the legislature wanted us to get to that 60% margin with a promise over the next three years to get us up to 100%. When I say that, that's important that you realize that's on annual foundation aid funding, not all the money in arrears from in the past. We are one of eight districts in the state that fell into that category. We're the only one that is a low-need/high-wealth school district. Part of the reason why we stayed in that category is because our enrollment is so stable. Services aid, the governor's proposal was rejected as far as combining that. STAR, they did not play with that at all, so it remains as it's been, taxpayers continue to get that relief. So in our case, it came out to be about $2.3 million total increase in state aid, most of that being foundation aid. That last piece, I'm going to talk about that on the next, jump to the next page on So this page gives you basically a print screen of what we receive when we get our state aid runs, it's ugly. It would make more sense if they put the two years next to each other, so you could see what the changes are, but they do it vertically. They've done it this way since 1987, don't ask me how I know that. Without the mask, I look much younger. Up to the top there, you see where it shows when they took the data from most of these forms of aid. Some of these forms of aid, they took the information from earlier databases. So they're always predicating it based on certain estimates, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. If you notice, the top portion there, that's what the aid we received for the current year. And you can see where they took out the pandemic adjustment, the $194,000, but they're not showing the CARES money coming back in. So right away, we're not necessarily comparing apples to apples here. UPK, the legislature is doing a big push on certain school districts going to full-day universal pre-kindergarten for four-year-olds, full-day being the key word there. A lot of schools, or some schools like us, do not have a UPK program. We don't fall into that category, and even if we did, this should not be in the state aid run. That should be treated like a grant and be in the special aid fund. So every school throughout the state, even if they're going to use those funds, have to pull it out and treat it differently. So you get to the, towards the bottom there, and you see the percentages of increase, et cetera. And then, at the very bottom, I have highlighted and read, that's where the federal stimulus money comes into play. So the CRRASA, that's what happened back in December 2020, and then the American Rescue Plan, which happened in March of 2021. Those numbers, and as soon as we got the state aid, we received letters from SED, the Comptroller, and US Department of Education, saying that that money has to be treated like a grant in the special aid fund, and it has to be used over the next three years. What's interesting is that one, I'm going to round it off, $1.3 million on the bottom for most school districts, that number's bigger than the bigger number on the top. Ours is smaller, and that's because it's allocated based on Title I funding, and as you know, compared to most schools, we don't get a lot of Title I funding. That's the number that is tied very closely to extended school day, summer programs. The state has a set of formulas for how much you have to spend in each year, a minimum amount, how much you need to spend in certain areas. However, the federal government is saying, "We never said that, you can't do that." So we have to wait a couple of weeks to get that ironed out. So taking that raw data from the state aid run, and I talk about this every year, we have to do certain things, such as looking at when they pulled the number from the databases, certain assumptions that happen. For example, I'll pick on transportation. They'll look at what we budgeted for a year ago, and they'll assume that we're going to spend every penny of that, and they base the aid estimate based on that. We try hard not to spend every penny of that money, and especially this year with the pandemic, and we're not doing, for example, as many athletic runs and things of that nature. We know we're not going to spend every penny of that. This is part of how the state builds up their reserves and fund balance, because they estimate statewide, they're going to pay more aid than they actually are. And it's estimated that adds up to about $6 billion statewide. So just interesting to put that into perspective. We also have certain forms of aid that we might not even have the program, or it's not for the general operating fund, and we just talked about that with the federal stimulus and the UPK. So there's certain forms of aid that usually we can pretty much rely on the state aid run, such as foundation aid, textbook, or what's known as instructional materials. The ones that require a lot of scrutiny are things like building aid, and we get our financial advisor involved, the company that helps us do the borrowings, et cetera, to make sure the state's looking at the correct borrowing schedules and the assumed amortization, transportation, as I just talked about, BOSI's, et cetera. So putting it all together, is just a quick analysis of looking at what we budgeted for the current year versus what we are adjusting to, adjusting the state aid run for next year. Foundation aid, we did reduce that a little bit, because when you have students that either go to Batavia School for the Blind, or the School for the Deaf, State School for the Deaf, what happens is your, part of your foundation aid gets withheld, and that school gets the foundation aid for that student. So for the services, we reduced that slightly. Full-day kindergarten, if you recall, there was a three-year phase-out when we went to full-day K. We do not get that anymore, so that went to zero. BOSI's aid, we adjusted based on actual expenditures and what we're projecting this year. The state estimated high on excess cost aid or special education, and that's because they looked at the previous year. Our excess cost threshold went up this year, as well as less students, so therefore, that was overfunded and through the line. Same thing for transportation, excuse me. Building aid, that, you should see a decrease there, because our, and you'll see a little bit later when we talk about our debt service. The energy performance contract bond, we paid that off this year, so that also brings the building aid down. However, if you recall, with BOSI's doing their capital project, that gets put into there, so it helped keep the state aid level. And that's part of what we planned for last year and tried to keep that level debt concept. year and tried to keep that level debt concept. So as we talked about, the legislature took a big swing in addressing the foundation aid issue. We were at 54% funding. There's actually school districts a little bit to our west that were at 120% of what the formula should address. And the longer this foundation aid problem went on, the bigger that gap became, and it almost became too big to solve. And I really commend the legislature for listening and doing what they can to try to adjust it. The concern is, do they have the ability and sustainability over the next three years to see it the rest of the way? So the chart's on the right, you've seen the top one before, and the green bars represent what our formula of foundation aid should have provided to us. You see where it kind of takes a dip there on the right? Remember the days of gap elimination adjustment? That's what that was. So actually, those green bars should be even higher. The blue bars represent the aid that we actually have received or will be getting, and you see an increase going into the '22 year. So we should be, if we were at fully funding for this year, we should be getting almost $18 million. We're getting a little over $11 million. Not that I'm complaining about it, just putting it into perspective for you. And somebody summarized it very well for me. This is like having your mortgage on your house and making 40% of your payments for several years, and then the first time you make the full payment, say, "I'm fully funded," right? So the bottom chart shows from a percentage basis, our underfunded amount in blue, and while we have this big increase this year, we're actually percentage-wise funded less even still in '21-'22 than we were in '08-'09. '08-'09, we were 43%, and we're now 40% underfunded. So when you put it all together, cumulatively, we're owed about $84 million in arrear, if you look at that whole mortgage analogy, so to speak. So that completes the state aid picture. Moving on to what the board is hopefully going to consider tonight, as well as the voters voting on, is the superintendent's spending plan. And this follows very similar to the tabs in your budget binders right there. So starting at a high-level view, and we'll drill down a little bit as we go, you can see schools, central student services, et cetera, down the line. It's a 2.56% or almost $3.6 million increase to the budget at 143,925. I asked Leanne to round it up to an even 144, but she just wouldn't do it. It's easier to remember. So when you look at the schools, and this is specific just to the school buildings themselves, okay, not to the central offices or other services that can't be allocated into the buildings. And then they have common parts, such as school administration, regular education, et cetera. You can see the activity there. So the school programs are up 1.13%. We had some retirement attrition savings. We also have done what we can to try to maximize our use of grants and pull some funds or some positions and expenditures into the grants. Going a little deeper, looking at the elementary. One of the things when you start looking at this level is sometimes you'll see things, and I kind of do analytical review first. So for example, that negative $63,000, gee, what is that? When you look at it, well, that's for services for students with special needs, and they're going to the middle school, for example. So you might see that move back and forth. So one building might have an increase, the other one have a decrease. So overall, 0.15% decrease at the elementary level. The middle school, there it is, school support is up 3.3%, so that just moved over from the elementary. So middle school is up 1.57%. The buildings and Dr. Von Brogan and other departments have done a lot of work to also address various initiatives within the budgets. High school is a 2% increase. Central Student Services, you'll see on the very first line there, regular ed support, and it's up $266,000. That is us anticipating, based on what we're hearing so far, that there might be some remote component to, even if we return fully, for maybe students that want to or have medical needs. Monroe One BOSI's is implementing a program, so we are using some funding there, estimating a certain number of students based on the cost of that program. If we want other flexibility, we could do a transfer from that budget code and put it into salaries or other formats if we need to. So Central Student Services is up 4.95%. Instructional Services, this is the Office of Curriculum and Standards Leaders, people personnel, the office itself, not the component that's in the buildings. Instructional Technology and the Data Team, overall, 0.38% decrease to that budget. Again, part of that is taking certain positions, such as behavior specialists, and reallocating them to things like grants. Support Services, which is the Business Office, Security and Maintenance, Operations and Maintenance, Technology for the infrastructure for the district, and People Transportation, overall, 1.13% increase. I'm going to do another shameless plug. If anybody wants to be a bus driver, let us know. Central Administration, which is the Board of Education, also legal. The Superintendent's Office, and you see an increase there of $50,000. That is for the initiative for cultural competency and the supports, as well as the BOSI's service, which is Tasha. So a little bit of an increase to that area. We have those kind of funds throughout the budget and in the buildings. However, this is a centralized code that's under the superintendent's control to basically run kind of like an internal grant process to help people out with certain initiatives. Undistributed, or some people call it unallocated, these are the things that support the entire district. So for example, debt service on our capital projects, it's up $821,000. That's for the BOSI's capital project. That would actually show a pretty substantial decrease if we didn't have the BOSI's capital project, because of the bond coming off. That also would change, if you recall, our tax cap. Benefits is not as big of a driver as it normally has been in the past, 3.44%. A couple of things having to do with that, one of which is being in the RASHIP Consortium. The plan had a very good year from a claims process. Some of that's due to COVID. We were very concerned that people were deferring their services and that there would be a big rise. We have not seen that yet, to our surprise. The costs for COVID, as far as if somebody has COVID, have not been very substantial. The average COVID case is under $70,000, and we were expecting much, much higher than that. So for '21-'22, RASHIP is projecting, or has actually established, a premium increase of 4%. That's compared to over 9% in the community, so it continued to trend pretty well. And all the schools in the area that are in the consortium have saved a lot of money over the last 16 years. So look at it graphically, as far as the piece of the pie. We have the schools at 39%, and you can see all the pieces there. Pretty consistent percentage-wise to previous years. Actually, the unallocated expenses are a smaller slice of the pie than in the previous year by a little amount, so it's good to see that not increasing. I know some people like to look at the budget, what's called object expense, if you're looking at the state uniform system of accounts. So you see salary and benefits there. There's your biggest chunk of the budget, and right on down the line, but still 2.56% Just a graphical representation. So 77% of our budget is salary and benefits, and that's a very similar percentage to what the support for our budget is as far as being property taxes. What's good to know is that salary and benefits, that's actually come down slightly, about a half percent lower than what it was last year. And salary and benefits are 57% driver of the total increase. Most years, it's more like in the 70% to 80% range. So that concludes the spending plan, if you will, and what you will be deliberating on later this evening. As far as how to pay for it all, putting it all together, we've already talked about state aid, so there's the $25.4 million for state aid, a $2.1 million increase. Our federal funds, remember, the stimulus money cannot be in the general fund budget. However, we do have to account for what they did last year, so that's why you see the 194,594 decrease. Our sales tax, kind of a good news area. A lot of schools at this time last year around us, they were projecting, because of the pandemic, 20%, 30% reductions in their sales tax. We took a much less radical view of that, and actually, sales taxes is starting to trend back up, and we're doing pretty well with that. So we've actually increased what we project county sales tax to be. Use of fund balance and reserves, Michael already talked about this. However, if we backed up, say, a month prior to the state enacted budget, you'd be seeing a number there of almost $3.6 million. We had to use a lot more in fund balance and reserves to balance the budget. So rather than spending a lot of money or increasing the budget when we got the additional state aid, we use that to reduce our reliance on fund balance and reserve to push out any potential fiscal cliff further into the future. At the very bottom line, the property tax levy is at the property tax cap of 1.95%. As you know, it's a pretty complicated formula. It doesn't always work out to 2%. From talking to my colleagues around, I think there's one district that's over 5% right now is what their calculation came out to be, and there's another one that's flirting with being a negative number. So here's just a pie chart of where we get our support. So 76% is tax levy. That has stayed pretty steady. What's nice to see is the state aid is actually up a couple of percent, 18% of our support is from state aid. So moving on to all of our propositions, and normally, we don't have this many propositions. Once in a while, we'll have three, usually it's two. Every single one of these propositions has to do with dealing with a capital reserve. And all a reserve is, is, reserves are part of fund balance, and fund balance is taking every year's year-end surplus and setting it aside. Reserves are a savings account. We're allowed by law to have certain types of reserves. Capital reserve is one of them, and we put that money aside for specific purposes, and the voters have to approve that, and you'll see that in a few minutes. So because of that, when we do a capital project, buy buses, et cetera, we do not have to ask the voters to levy an additional tax, or can we go out and borrow? There's a lot of school districts right now, for their buses, for example, they're doing just that. If the voters approve that bus purchase, they're actually increasing the tax levy and/or they're issuing debt. So we have four propositions. One is the bus purchase, and we'll go into detail in a few minutes here on these. You've seen that every year for the last several years. We're proposing a small capital reserve, or capital projects, excuse me, and then we are requesting to renew the capital reserve because it's at its end of life, and we've already put in the maximum amount we can put into it. So the timing worked out perfect, but it's time to re-up it, so we can have that benefit into the future. And then also, to support the one-to-one technology initiative, is the use of the technology reserve. So very similar to what you've seen in the past. We're requesting to replace 12 school buses. Six of them are large, 66-passenger, and then we have six smaller buses. They're all unleaded fuel, they're not diesel fuel. We've made that conversion a few years ago, and we upgraded our fuel farm last year for that. So we're asking the voters to take 1.3, almost $1.4 million, out of the reserve for the purchase of buses, and then as the buses, those buses generate state aid or transportation aid, approximately $930,000, we want to put that money back into the reserve, and so far, every year, we have done that. So this is just the language that you'll see on the ballot and also in the newsletter, et cetera. Again, we are not asking to levy additional tax or take on debt to do this. Our next item, our next proposition, is asking from our facilities' capital reserve to withdraw $6 million to do a mini, what I call a mini-capital project. Prior to the pandemic, we were planning on doing a rather large capital project and going to vote on it this past December. Because of the pandemic, we put it on hold. Unfortunately, some nagging issues, like leaking windows and roofs, don't go on hold because of that. So the team got together, and we focused on three major buckets, being health, safety, efficiency and effectiveness, and preservation of facility. And we tried to make sure that anything that we did within this project is not something that would be touched or be redone if a larger capital project was to be done in the near future. So our focus are on things like emergency generators. We have three areas in our district that are known for losing power when the wind gets much above 30 miles an hour, one of which being our transportation department, and when that happens, we don't have a way to communicate with our buses via the radios. LED lighting, we have some lighting systems in several of our buildings in the large group areas, such as auditoriums, gymnasiums, commons areas, et cetera, where they're so old, we can't even get parts to replace them, and they're very inefficient, so we would like to replace them with LED lighting to get more efficiency. We have some partial roofs at a couple of buildings that need to be addressed, and the LOM building has the original wood windows, and there's many, many of them, and they are leaking badly, and it's causing problems or damaging the facility, so we need to replace those and the boiler. So requesting from the voters to spend $6 million, or take that out of that reserve and do that for a capital project. Next is the authorization to renew the reserve. So the 2007, we had a reserve, that was our first capital reserve. That rolled into the 2011 reserve, and that's become end of life. That's reached its 10-year probable term, as well as we're real close to putting the maximum amount of money into it. So what we were requesting is to set up this new reserve that would last for up to 10 years, a maximum of $42 million that can be deposited, including bringing in the $17 million that's in the current reserve. If that money is not fully expended by the end of the 10 years, and you decide not to do another reserve, that money stays in that reserve until the voters approve doing a capital project or doing something else with that money. The board doesn't have, does not have the authority to do something with that money without board approval. The next part of that reserve, again, is to take the remaining funds, at this time, it's a little over $17 million that's in the current reserve, and put that into the new one, and then to deplete and terminate the current reserve. Any questions on that? I know that one's got a lot of moving parts. Lastly, proposition number four is to ask him to take money out of the Instructional Technology Capital Reserve. Matt and his team and Dr. Kimmer have done a lot of work looking at what would be needed to further our one-to-one initiative. In essence, we've kind of done that to a certain extent with the pandemic, so to try to see this the rest of the way and target certain grade levels, $875,000 to get additional technology for that purpose, as well as, you heard earlier, replace the additional wear and tear on the equipment that's out there right now.
Just have to back it up one. Yeah, I think I hit the wrong button. I'm sorry. Thank you, Darren. So just to close the evening, a few key points. The budget, again, that's proposed, is assuming and developed with the expectation that school will be reopened in September, that we will be fully in person. The budget presented in front of you is balanced. It remains within the property tax cap. It preserves programs and services, and I probably shouldn't do this, but I'll step over on this other side again. So we're able to preserve services here, and then with the federal funds outside of this, we're able to enhance a lot of the services we feel we need to target as we transition back to COVID. The efforts by our nearest state legislator to... to address the 15-year-long foundation aid is commendable. So thank you to our legislators for looking at schools like Pittsburgh and moving our foundation aid up to a minimum threshold. Our year-to-year increase of spending is 2.56%. The property tax levy increase is 1.95%, and it's within the tax cap. And it contains the budget and tax levy growth below the county average, despite the lowest foundation aid per pupil and percent funded in the Western New York area. I think that's pretty impressive, to be quite honest. So we're putting together a budget in front of the board that all of us feel really good about, specifically as we feel it's going to address a lot of the student needs that we're anticipating. May 10th, we do have our public budget hearing. And then, May 18th is the budget vote and board election. We do not foresee, at this point, that that will change as far as the format from pre-COVID. So this will be an in-person budget vote, like typical years. We're working on the logistics, such as how to host a vote and maintain social distance and other protocols. So at this point, we've concluded our presentation and would like to open it up for questions and discussion. I want to thank you all for your time and for your involvement throughout the process. Thank you.
Any questions around the table?
Yeah, just curious. I think I know the answer. But from whom did the commitment to get to 60% and move toward 100%? From whom did that come? The legislature, the governor, both?
The legislator.
This is a tiny little thing, but I'm just curious what the increase in the Board of Education budget is, because the highlight is that it's discontinuance of the New York State School Boards Association.
I believe part of that is the new evaluation process that we reviewed at a board retreat. And so that would involve how to evaluate one another in the different ways using specific software, including myself.
Val?
I have a quick question. Darren mentioned moving some items, such as behavioral specialists, out of some of those categories and changing them to grants. I'm just wondering, is that sustainable? Is that sustainable? Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Darren, thank you very much. Mike, appreciate the very comprehensive presentation tonight. So with that, I would like to make a motion to accept the 2021-2022 proposed budget presentation and adoption. Thanks, Ted and Irene. Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. May I have an approval of the minutes from April 7th, please? Val and Renee? Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Education reports. We have quite a few meetings that are forthcoming. We have board leadership, executive, information exchange. Was supposed to be the last meeting last week, but we have decided to add an additional meeting in May. So the date is yet to be determined, but we'll share that out as soon as we have it. Robin, at this point, would you like to report out on our information exchange meeting last week? We had an update to the superintendent equity update that was initiated last year, and it was a phenomenal presentation. So Robin, if you would kindly report out, that would be great.
Yes, the meeting was on April 14. And so part of the topics discussed, the presenters, I'll start with that, were four superintendents from Monroe County School Boards, Joanne Antonacci from Monroe 2, Orlean's BOCES, Dan White from Monroe 1, BOCES, Sean Nelms from East, and Kathleen Grotman from Grease Central School District. And so the background is there was a June 2020 correspondence from Monroe County Superintendents whereby they all affirmed that all districts stand together against racism, and they outlined action steps. So part of the work involves culturally responsive sustaining framework and therefore guiding principles to that, that there be a welcoming and affirming environment for all children, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and ongoing professional learning. So exciting items coming up for our children's learning. They will be learning about key activities that have occurred in the Rochester area. For example, they will learn about the July 1964 event. They will learn about Daniel Prude and the handling of that. And so this was basically a check-in, though, for us to go back to our individual districts and find out, follow up, where are we, the progress. But as it happens, in our district, our superintendent for curriculum and instruction only ward had already presented on February 23rd about where we stand with that curriculum. So that's exciting, an exciting initiative that will be coming up in our district. And I was glad to be a part of a district that had already addressed that. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Great job. And as you can see, we have labor relations, legislative steering, and communication outreach actually met last week. And we developed talking points that you will be seeing shortly in a board insight article. So I'm looking forward to that. Dates to remember, the 30th of April, schools will be closed for Superintendent's Conference Day. And the 10th of May is our next scheduled board meeting. And moving on to the BOCES annual election and budget vote, everybody in their board package should have a copy of the resumes of the candidates that are being presented this year. A lot of names we recognize. Everyone around the table has worked with a number of these candidates, and I feel really confident in what they have to offer, BOCES. And I'm really excited to actually take a vote this evening since we do have these established relationships with this slate of candidates. So if we could go over the five candidates, we'll have to vote independently. And we'll start with seat number one. If I may have a vote to cast one vote for the election of Robert Dixon, resident of West Aronacuate Central School District, as a member of the Monroe 1 BOCES Board for a term of office which will begin on July 1st, 2021, and end June 30th, 2024. May I have a hand up in the air for a yes vote for Robert Dixon? And any noes? Any abstentions? Okay. That's number one. Number two, to cast one vote for the election of Maureen Nupp, resident of the Fairport Central School District, as a member of Monroe 1 BOCES Board for a term of office which will begin on July 1st, 2021, and end on June 30th, 2024. May I have a show of hands for a yes vote? And no vote? Abstentions? Thank you. Seat number three, to cast one vote for the election of Thomas Naspeka, resident of the Webster Central School District, as a member of the Monroe 1 BOCES Board for a term of office which will begin July 1st, 2021, and end June 30th, 2024. May I have a show of the hands of a yes vote? No? Abstentions? Thank you. And four, to cast one vote for the election of Nancy Somal, resident of the East Aronacuate Central School District, as a member of Monroe 1 BOCES Board for a term of office which will begin July 1st, 2021, and end June 30th, 2024. Show of hands for a yes vote? No? And abstentions? And the final vote is...
Requesting to grab two pianos. We will conduct a public bid for them.
Okay. May I have a motion, please? Thanks, Renee and Pete. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Darren. Human Resource Report, Sean.
Good evening. First for your consideration is our professional staff report. You'll see our resignation for retirement list. So that's 10 SRP school-related professionals. And their total years of service are 156.5 years. So we thank them for their many years of service. We also have an appointment for an SRP. We have two resignations, one SRP and one teacher at the end of the year. And then we also have our latest round of spring coaching appointments for you to consider.
May I have a motion to approve the professional staff report? Thanks, Robin. Thanks, Todd. Any questions?
Varsity, right, varsity head coaches. So those were approved in the fall. So they were already approved. You're welcome.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next is the support staff report. And we have a retirement in our teacher center, Robin Dixon, with 36.1 years of service.
Unbelievable.
I know. We have a bus driver, Richard Miller, with 11.2 years of service. And we have one cleaner resignation from Cochrane Road Middle School.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve, please? Thanks, Val and Robin. Questions, comments? I just had one comment, 36 years. Please, that is, that's amazing. We can't thank Robin enough for her dedication to the district. 36 years is truly incredible. So all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Special Education Report, Elizabeth. Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mike.
There is a need for an executive session this evening regarding pending litigation.
May I have a motion, please? Renee and Pete? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Few other items, just to summarize some of the changes that have happened with the new guidance from New York State Department of Health. The changes, I think, for a lot of us have been pretty frustrating as we felt that new guidance would allow our secondary schools to open. So just to take us back a little bit, there's really three significant changes with the new New York State Department of Health guidance. One is something that we've talked about quite a bit, and that's around barriers. The first change is that barriers are no longer permissible as a way to bring students to three feet or closer. Secondly, at the secondary level, the only way to move from six feet to three feet is if students are co-horted while we are in a red zone, which is the highest zone as determined by the CDC. Of note, it really doesn't impact us much, but at the elementary school, students can now attend at three feet, regardless of what zone we are in, which, the good news, in the county, it allows other schools to now bring back their elementary students for the first time. So I'm happy for the other schools to bring back their elementary students. So as far as what would have to happen for us to open our secondary schools, one, we'd have to get out of the red zone. That is prescribed in the guidance. That's not a local decision. And I would also, to put a number to that, and I'm not sure how many of you saw the conference with Superintendent Executive Bello and Dr. Mendoza. They talked about some of the differences and what we would need in our county to reopen at the secondary level. And essentially, we would need a seven-day rolling average of about 105 cases or less per day to get our secondary students back into three feet this year. To be pragmatic, I would say that each day, this seems more unlikely, as our region is currently, has the highest rate across New York State. As of April 18th, and I didn't check the exact numbers today, our county's seven-day rate of new COVID-positive cases was 248. So we have a significant reduction that would need to take place and a seven-day rolling average for us to bring back our secondary students this year. So how do we do that? We need our community to continue to wear a mask and to be smart with distancing and social gatherings. Once that number goes down to the threshold as prescribed in the guidance, we will not be able to reopen. Once it does, then we can reopen. So it begs the question, why don't we just reopen? Why don't we just say tomorrow, everyone comes back in? And I feel like a broken record, but I want to keep repeating. This message is that when the New York State Department of Health develops what's called guidelines, what they're really saying is they're not providing guidance like a mom or a dad would. Like, this is, you know, what we would hope for you to do. Guidance means law. So we're in a pandemic right now. Guidance means this is something that you have to follow. And that's New York State Department of Health who we report to. My sense is that if I were a doctor and New York State Department of Health tells me what acceptable practices are, that if I were a doctor and said I disagree with these practices and I'm going to do my own thing, then more than likely, I would be at risk for losing my license. I probably wouldn't have an insurance carrier. I could be fined. I could be sued, or all of the above can happen. And so as an employee of the state, we have to adhere to state rules. We have to adhere to state laws. We've taken an oath to do that. Ethically, we have to do that. We don't necessarily get to pick or choose which laws we want to follow and which laws we don't want to follow. You may see a few other districts starting to reopen at the secondary level. I've seen different posts on Facebook and social media around different schools opening. And to be honest, I can't really comment as to why other than each district in each county has their own story. In Pittsburgh, our story, and in our county, our story is we follow the law whether we agree with it or not. I'll also share that any district that opens without adhering to the guidelines may have to shift gears again as any complaint from any one person to any district that's not following the guidelines can be submitted anonymously, and then the review process starts. And so for Pittsburgh, we are following the law. And we're following the medical guidance of New York State Department of Health. I can't stress enough how unique we are. Having said all of that, especially as it pertains to our K-5 students, from the start of the school year, our elementary students have been in five days a week. And this is because of the commitment from our board, our administrators, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and our other staff. Basically, in order to do this, the district was not an adherence to the teacher and paraprofessional contracts in many, many ways. However, everyone was all in, knowing the importance and implications of not having our our youngest learners in person. Any conversations that you may hear about unions blocking reopening certainly couldn't be further from the truth in Pittsburgh. I commend the hearts and I commend the conviction of our Pittsburgh Central School District staff to do whatever it took to reopen for, in September, for our K-through-five students, along with our conviction to keep trying and advocating to reopen our secondary schools. The other thing I'd just like to touch on is, is, is social media. It's taken quite a bit of our time, and I'm trying to put this in perspective. We, we purposely teach our students the importance of analyzing sources of data for accuracy. We teach our students how to analyze sources for credibility. And there should be a reminder for all of us that posts on social media are not necessarily facts. And we, we, we have to be mindful of that as the consumer, that as we go on social media and we see things, we can't read them and say, oh, my gosh, I can't believe this is happening. I can't believe they're doing this, or they're not doing this. So I'll give you a couple of examples. Today, thankfully, two parents called to share that they heard on Facebook that next year, parents will have to choose what school in the county they want to send their child to. One parent was very distraught that the county was going to have open enrollment, and this is part of a grander scheme of the division or dissection or regionalization of schools, I'm, I'm thinking, but that's not true. But someone called and said, this is out there. Can, can you talk about this a little bit? And it's just, it's not true. And, and these things happen every day. I think the difference is that people are starting to call and say, is this true or not? Another example, just a short time ago, on social media was that eight or more Monroe County school districts were opening secondary schools, K-12 are all going to be open. That didn't happen. There's a lot of good information on social media, but I think that we just have to be really thoughtful about what to trust and, and, and deciding what's credible and what's not credible. I offer this, and I believe this to be true, that, that we have been as communicative as, as possible. I feel like we're communicating, we're ongoing. Our communication's been ongoing as it relates to anything pertinent relative to COVID or, or reopening. So in the event you see something on social media and you haven't received it through, through the district, please email me, and I will either answer your question directly or I will forward it to the appropriate central office person to assist. What we don't want is misinformation, especially during a crisis. It, it, it compounds what's, what's happening with students, with parents, with families, with the community. We all have enough stress dealing with this crisis, that at minimum, we should be able to provide accurate information. And, and we are happy to do that, if you just reach out. I also want to acknowledge that all of our engines right now are probably out of gas. This has been going on way, way too long. And when our tanks are this low, this is the time where we really have to dig down as deep as we can, and we have to persevere, and we have to do it in a real positive way. We're close to the end. When I think about best case and worst case scenarios for us relative to this pandemic, the best case scenario is that we're able to open our secondary schools this year, that our numbers in the county drop and we're able to bring back our, our secondary students. Worst case scenario is that we open in September. We had no ability to say that last year. We are so close to herd immunity in any way you look at it. I just don't see a way we're not open either this spring or in September at the latest. Either way, we're opening very soon. That means that very, very, the end is here. It's, you, you, you can, you can reach out and feel it. And so we need to dig down deep into those empty tanks and finish strong. And by finish strong, I mean pick people up who are struggling, be positive, show acts of kindness, bring integrity back in dealing with adversity, and be your best self. Bring our community together and, and be models for our kids in everything that we do. There's people that just, at any cost, want schools open. I'm one of them, I want schools open. There's people that don't want schools open. There's extremes on both sides, and there's people in the middle. What we can't allow to happen are the extremes, open, don't open, to cause a divide, because we're so close. And in Pittsburgh, we are better than that. So we hang our hats, at the end of the day, on healthy relationships, on being collaborative, on putting students first, being accessible, and that's where we need to remain. And we need to do it in a real strong way. We need to finish this out. We're, we're so close, if we could finish it out with integrity and with character, it, it would, it would mean a lot. Because when this is done, we're all going to have to reflect. We're going to have to all reflect on how we acted during a once-in-a-lifetime crisis. And I would love for our community to reflect and look back and say, we took the highest of high roads. We may not have agreed with each other all along the way, but we did our best to pull people up and to be supportive. Shortly, we're about to enter into public comment. I would like for taking the high road to start now. Some things to know about public comment is that students attend our meetings. They attend public comment for many reasons, including a requirement for their participation in government class. We have an opportunity through public comment to model for our students. How to express an interest or a concern or to provide feedback in a constructive way. We, Pittsburgh Central School District have been leaders in so many ways, a ton of ways. And in today's world, there's no important role for us now than to lead and how to be constructive with advocacy or with other interests, especially as we see how people are, are operating around the globe. We have an opportunity here to be civil and to model it and to work together through differences. The enemy is not one another, and I think that's so important. The enemy is COVID. How we deal with COVID is going to potentially make us stronger. How we deal with COVID is going to dictate how quickly we have to deal with COVID. We're close. People do the right thing and stay distanced and wear masks, we end it. Our region is the highest in the state, it shouldn't be. Let's get our kids back in school by doing the right thing. So all year, we've been focusing on multiple scenarios. I think that's important. We are set to reopen if we're given the green light. I don't know if that's going to happen, to be candid, given our numbers, but we're prepared for it. The other thing that we're preparing for, as we're preparing to go back to school or not go back to school, is the recognition of the pain that this has caused not only everyone, but our seniors, because our seniors didn't have their events last year as juniors. So they did not have a junior prom last year. They did not have a lot of things as juniors. And so we need to start focusing all of our attention on things that we can control. So there's some things we can't control that's in the New York State Department of Health guidance, but what we can control is looking at how do we have our seniors celebrated? And how do we maintain the milestones that are so important in their lives? So Saturday, June fifth, I would ask you to save the date. We are going to have an amazing senior parade down Main Street in Pittsburgh. Friday, June eleventh, we are planning for a senior ball, or senior prom, depending on the school. June sixteenth and seventeenth, we're going to bring our seniors together for awards nights. And then June nineteenth, we are working, we're planning our graduation at each high school. We're going to bring as many visitors as possible. We will have to set some parameters, I'm just not sure what those numbers are yet. The other thing of note is that in typical form, we can't just focus on the now, we also have to focus on the future. And so as we are now prepared to open this spring, if we're allowed to, our mindset also is, okay, but we're definitely opening in September. So what do we have to do for our K-through-twelve students between now and September to prepare for them to come back? That work is ongoing. Mrs. Thomas mentioned the superintendent's conference day is coming up on April thirtieth. That conference day is focused on all of the supports and what school needs to look like to transition kids back. So our focus right now is coming off a year and a half crisis and bringing kids back in a healthy way. I'm compelled to just, to end this conversation by, or not conversation, sorry about, but, but, by sharing that I can't thank our families and our staff enough for being so overwhelmingly positive. It's been a really long and draining experience, and I know for a fact that not everyone agrees with every decision that's been made along the way. But people have been understanding and grateful around what it really takes to teach, to be an administrator, to provide opportunities for students during this crisis that we've been in since last March. Know that we all want to be in school full-time, and we all believe that that's what's best for students, and we're working through all of this, all the time, and, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime crisis that we're in. And, and, and we're close to getting out of it. So I ask everyone just to hang in there. Do everything that you can, please, to be kind, to be kind to one another, to look out for one another. And if you know of anyone that is in need of support, if it's a mental health crisis or if it's financial support or, or any other type of need, reach out to anyone that's at this table, reach out to your building administrator, reach out to an adult that works in the district. We will do everything in our power to support and help you, your family, your children in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thanks Mike. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Pete and Renee? Oh.
Can I, I just have to back up for a second. I got a little bit caught up there. Also, we have a policy recommendation, seventy-six forty-two, on extended school year services.
It's a first reading.
If there's any questions, it's a first reading.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Okay, going back to all in favor? Okay. Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business? I do have just something to enter into public comment. As we do make this transition back to our in-person meetings, I think it's a good time to reestablish the protocols associated with public comment. Public comment section of any school board's agenda is included at the discretion of each Board of Education. The Pittsburgh Board of Education values transparency and the public's comments made during its meetings. As such, the Pittsburgh Board of Education actively provides for this agenda item at its regular meetings. The Board would like to reestablish that the Board of Education meetings are not public forums. Rather, they're business meetings held in public where dialogue is not normally conducted with the audience. A public comment section on a school board's agenda is meant to be a time for a school board to receive respectful and constructive feedback, opinions, and information. These comments are then taken under advisement by the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools. The Pittsburgh Board of Education meetings are conducted in public in a constructive environment. As role models for young citizens and our students, the following protocols are in place to preserve decorum during these meetings and respect when addressing the Board of Education. Public comment speakers should behave in a civil, respectful manner and be mindful that we routinely have students attending these meetings as part of their coursework. Comments should be in reference to an issue or topic, not an individual. Each speaker will have the floor for no more than three minutes in order to be respectful of those in the audience and others who may be waiting to comment. The Vice President, to my left, will be keeping track of the time, and the Board President reserves the right to limit the total amount of time. In an effort to avoid repetitiveness, if speakers are attending with other residents with similar input, we ask that the group designate one person to address the board as a group. The speaker representing this group is invited to share the number of people in attendance at the meeting for whom they're representing. When you're called on to speak, please clearly state your name and address, and we do ask that all of our public that's in attendance to wear a mask. For speakers who do not follow these meeting and decorum protocols, the speaker's privilege to use the floor will no longer be recognized by the Board of Education. Thank you. So with that, we'll now recognize the first person that's here to speak. They're on their way. Okay, Clayton, welcome. You can use the microphone right there, and if you could just state your name and address for our minutes, and just to let you know, you have three minutes on the floor. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. My name's Clayton Baker. Dr. Baker, I'm nineteen nineteen Cockings Road in Pittsburgh. To the Board, we need to fully open all our schools to the normal five-days-per-week format. You've heard me plead with you for months about the mental health crisis stemming from prolonged school closures. Last meeting, you heard a mother in the district tell you about her own child's struggles with suicidality. The solution to this crisis is to open the schools, and yet our schools are not fully open. Here are three steps to accomplish full reopening in Pittsburgh. Step one, we must publicly acknowledge the real barriers to reopening. Step two, we need to overcome those barriers. And step three, we need to follow the examples of districts and superintendents who have already reopened. What are the real barriers to full reopening? I'm a physician, they're not medical. There is no medical reason for our schools to not be fully open. All the schools in Florida are fully open. Zero people, zero people have died as a result, zero. The barriers, as difficult as the state is and has been, are not exclusively at the state level. Many, many large districts are open all around New York State. The barriers to reopening are principally political, and they are principally local. Just for an example, numerous schools in Anadaga County, like Liverpool, this is, this is a huge district, six hundred kids in a class in one building, have been fully open since April fifth. They're doing fine. They're doing fine. Batavia, smaller, but just to the west of us, reopened fully today. To the east of us, Wayne just reopened fully today. Just get out of Monroe County and voila, it can be done. What do those districts have that we don't? It's not what they have, it's what they don't have. First and foremost, they do not have Mike Mendoza as their health commissioner. Who is Mike Mendoza anyway? Is he some kind of super-expert, medical czar, the public health guru of Monroe County? No. Mike Mendoza is a general practitioner. He's a family doc. He has no fellowship training in infectious disease, virology, or communicable diseases. He has an MPH, which is nice, but you can earn one online in about 18 months. He has no research programs. He has no significant professional reputation outside of Rochester. He's a local family practice doc who was appointed health commissioner a few years ago. That's what he is. In a word, Mendoza is an appointed local government bureaucrat. That's what he is. He's also a compromised bureaucrat. He has a huge inherent conflict of interest due to the fact that he's simultaneously employed both by the county and by the largest health system in the area.
Okay, if you could wrap up.
Need to stop listening to Mike Mendoza and open the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. I believe we have one more person. Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Hi, Nicole.
Yes, here I am.
Here you are.
In person.
If you could just clearly state your name and address for us.
Sure. My name's Nicole Sidhu, and I live at 39 McCord Woods Drive. I want to invite the board to reflect and to do a little bit of analysis as to why we find ourselves in this position with our grade six through 12 still only attending school two days a week, still on computers three days a week. I want to give the board an example of a school district in Westchester County, and it's one of many downstate school districts that is fully open, K to 12. Okay, Mamaronak School District, 5,500 students, very similar to Pittsburgh. It's in Westchester County. Westchester County has a new case rate of 28 per day per 100,000. Our rate in Monroe County is 35 per day per 100,000, both in the CDC red zone. But we, in Monroe County, in Pittsburgh, our kids are still shut out of school. In Mamaronak, they're back. They're back full-time, K through 12. How did this happen? It's not the only one. Lots of districts in Suffolk County, in Nassau County, downstate, back, full-time. Infection rates, case rates, similar to ours. Why? The board needs to ask itself how this happened, okay? This is not just a happenstance. It's decisions that the board has made strategically, okay? It's relationships with county authorities. And the board needs to ask these questions, not only for understanding where it went wrong, but also for the future. We are looking at a fall where truly, if the state regulations don't change, you could be forced into a shutdown again, okay? You could be forced into hybrid again. Superintendent Perro spoke about rising case rates and did not mention seasonality. And yet, many experts identify seasonality as a major factor with this virus, which means we're having a surge now that will probably end in the next couple of weeks. Many experts predict that. But we're going to have it again in November. So what's going to happen in November? Are we going to have to shut down again? The district needs to think about this, needs to plan, needs to be thinking about how those downstate districts did better and how our district is still having kids shut out of school. For the sake of the kids, you had a mom here last meeting whose son was suicidal.
Nicole, you need to wrap up.
I'm sorry?
You need to wrap up.
I will. Okay? This is serious. These are serious questions, not only mental health, but also in terms of academic losses. We are not measuring those losses now. We don't know what they are, but they're significant. You don't shut kids out of school and put them on a computer three days a week out of a five-day week and not pay a price. And those downstate kids, they're not having that anymore. They're in school full-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Do we have anyone else waiting? Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Renee and Pete, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. Thank you for joining us. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.